Let's thank the county commissioners to order the pre-stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the February 20 meeting notes?
I'd make a motion that we approve this.
You made a motion, would you like a second? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mike Looking.
Morning, I don't have anything to get approved, I just have my monthly IT report. Emails, we had 73,309 emails in February, 23,969 of which were blocked due to being spam or viruses. So, still keeping on that high number there. Phone calls, I tried to break it down a little bit more, I did a little more calculations on it. Had 59,441 total phone calls. There were 19 business days in February, plus the one holiday that the city was closed, or basically closed when we were open. So they give us 20 business days. So we were averaging, you know, almost 3,000 calls a day throughout those business days, 2,780 calls. And then it shows 1,555 average of those were answered. Then we had 180 tickets for me, 63 for Mike, and then 188 county tickets, 52 city, and three of the tickets were just what I would call general or for the public. Projects working on, I'm trying to improve the inventory system that we set up, other than using the old KWS system, we try to get the inventory up to date, not only for IT but for everybody in the courthouse. I'm still working to redesign the IT ticket system, improving how we do off-site backups right now. You know, I'm still looking at some services to do that stuff for us automatically, but we're still looking at like $15,000 for every quote that I've gotten for that automated thing. You know, if I can do it without coming up with $15,000 a year, then that would obviously be better. But on the flip side, we don't want to lose any data, so. I mean, the process of getting quotes for the new firewall, which is something that I had budgeted for, right now I've got four different vendors that are quoting out on it. The last quotes that I got last year were around $4,300, so. And then, I've got a couple companies that are calling me for, I don't even know really what to call them, but they're basically new devices that have come out. They kind of work like a firewall to mitigate and evaluate the traffic going through them, but the idea is to look for things like ransomware attacks, viruses, and those kind of things that are, it's not meant to replace your firewall or your antivirus software, that kind of thing, it's just meant to supplement it. So it's kind of a weird animal, so I'm not really sure what to call them besides a security appliance. But if, you know, there's five or six companies that have started calling me in just the last two or three weeks, calling about these kind of things. But with the ransomware having become such a prevalent issue throughout the world, I'm sure you've heard about Madison County, I think it was Madison County, or one of them a couple months back, there was a hospital recently that got hit. You know, if we get one, we're kind of stuck. And we did get one when they first started becoming an issue, but at the time, the data wasn't deemed important enough to pay the $500 ransom to try to get it unlocked. And then the ransoms have only gotten higher. I mean, there's some ransom for some of these antivirus or ransomwares that it's $200,000 to get your stuff back. So, obviously, one of the other reasons to look into off-site backups, which is something that we're doing, so. Other than that, the new copier for clerk's office is supposed to be delivered in, I believe, two weeks, I think it was the 16th. The DCR is scheduled to be installed for Superior Court on April 17th, so there'll be no court in Superior that day. I don't know if they're going to plan to use the circuit court for any hearings they might have, or just not have court that day, I'm not sure which, but that's a Thursday, so they're only open half a day anyway. So, that's it for me, any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Baker.
Should have received an Everbridge messaging system invoice. I was, I'm going to recommend we keep them for one more year. It was set up for two-year renewals. I'm studying, three other companies I'm looking into, there are lots of competitors. Everbridge is a very good one. It's working, but most of the competitors are less money. But rather than pull the trigger right away, I think it's wise to let some time pass so that I know that with the other companies, we're comparing apples to apples as opposed to apples to oranges, so we know that if we do switch over, it's a wise decision that where we don't end up having less and just not having what we need. So, still trying to figure out the way to go forward, but for the next 12 months, I think it's wise to stick with what we have, if that makes sense.
Sounds very good. I thank you very much.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Everbridge one-year contract for a total of $10,490. I think it's $90?
I think so.
Yeah, $1,490, which the city will pay for half of that. And we, I would make a motion that we pay that like we did last year out of the commissioner's contractual services.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Everbridge contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
I was on the agenda for two claims that would be over $500, so seeking approval for those. The first one is Fred Pryor Seminars. It is for the clerical staff and me. It is to buy a membership for, it's a two-year term that they're wanting, but we would pay, we'd only be paying for the first year. So I'd be asking for $995. The reason I want this for clerical, originally I was looking at the whole department, but the probation officers because of all the changes that we're doing and evidence-based, we get a lot of free trainings through Department of Corrections and Office of Court Administration. So this is just for clerical. With all the changes that we're doing and the amount of work that we have to do, I want the clerical staff to continue their education. This would be for improving computer skills, organizational skills. And what I like about it, it's unlimited for that year if you buy the membership, to go to any seminars or courses that are offered. What I really like about it is the online courses, they have over 2,000 available. So clerical would not have to leave and be away. If they have to go to training, we have to cover for them. Sometimes it's a probation officer, I'd rather probation officers be focused on their responsibilities. I actually did this Fred Pryor membership, it was probably four or five years ago. It's excellent, I've had experience with it. It does, I can administrate it, see what clerical courses they've gone through, that they've completed and they get a certificate. Originally it's $499 per person, but they're offering $199 per person if we agree to the terms of the contract. And I think a copy got to Colin, right?
Yeah.
Of the agreement. It doesn't require signature, it's an email, sufficient. Basically, do you guys have any questions about that? I think you got flyers also.
I've attended a Fred Pryor seminar when I was with the workforce development.
They're very good.
And it was very interesting, very informative, and I felt like I was a better person for it. And I think the fact that they can take all of these online was a definite advantage. So I'd accept a motion to approve the training with the Fred Pryor.
Jenna, before we go further, can you tell me the total cost?
For the total cost, if for the two-year term is $1,990, however, we're only paying for the first year, so today I'm asking for $995. And then the second year would go to the second year of budgeting next year.
Okay.
I would pay it then.
Do you have the funds in yours?
Yes, and we've budgeted, we've got budgeted funds to.
And then the $199, what's that, would that be per person on top of it, or is?
No, that's what the $995 includes for a year.
Okay, okay, that's what I didn't understand.
Yeah, no, it's not on top of it. It's basically the $995 for five staff members to have a year of membership.
I see, okay, all right, I understand. I apologize for that.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve this training package for the two-year plan with only one year at a time paid for, for Jenna and probation officers.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay, so the second claim, that would be over $500 that I'm asking for, and again, Colin, shit, now this is something that would require a signature, it's the predictive index agreement. It is a month-to-month agreement. Basically, it's a management tool for me with us becoming evidence-based, we're going through lots of changes in the department, I think it would improve our overall performance. It's basically assessments that the staff would participate in, and it looks at behavioral assessments and cognitive abilities, and then it gives me management strategies of how to, it identifies their drive, motivation, their ability to learn new changes, or how fast they can adapt to changes. I see this as short-term. I got this, the two new officers I hired, both in their previous jobs did this predictive index, and they brought copies and they were spot-on. I did participate in one as a sample, so I can see what it looks like, and I got a three-page summary on myself. It's a maximum of 25 people that can do this, and since we only have 12 in our department, and we have two that's already done it, I could probably offer this to other county agencies if they were interested in getting the assessments. It's also good for new hires to know that you're hiring. If I only do the three months, we can stop at three months. That data, they keep that data, so if later on, say a year from now, we decide, I've hired a new person and I want them to do an assessment, they will have that information for us. It also pays for one person to attend a workshop on how to interpret, on how to interpret the data. So that total, it's $761 per month, and it's a month-to-month. Again, if I only use it for a month, I wouldn't do it for the next month, I'm guessing up to three months. They also provide one-on-one consultation, so if somebody's having a difficult time in the office, I can, I can call and say, here's what's going on, and they'll give recommendations on how to manage that or how to change things.
And you've got the funds for this?
Yeah, we budgeted that under other services. I think we have, I know it was at least $2,000 for that, I think it's $4,000 actually.
So this was something you were planning on for, since budget time?
Yes.
So it's not, you're not substituting?
No.
This for something else?
No.
Okay. And will, I guess I'm following you somewhat, will you use this for evaluation of continued employment then?
It can be used for pre-employment, it can be used for continuing employment on I'm doing performance evaluations, which is required from the DOC grant, so we're documenting annual performance evaluations. It would be used as management strategies with that, and would help with that.
Your pleasure. I'd make a motion that we approve up to the three-month trial period for this indexing.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve this program that Jenna's requesting for up to three months. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And then, I'm adding something, if I may. We just found out Friday, the last time that I was here, I, we had submitted a grant for the Drug Coalition, and we just got a notice on Friday that part of the, actually there were two grants, and the probation officer, Lindsay Tandy, actually wrote this grant, so I'm giving her all the credit. We did get awarded $2,025 out of that grant. It is to purchase instant drug screens. That's for immediate needs, if we're trying to get someone into treatment or convinced to go to treatment. Prosecutor asks us sometimes for their diversion program, they want to know if somebody has anything in their system before they offer that. So this grant is to buy those instant screens, I think it was for 300 of those. I did give a copy of that grant application to Diane Wright the last time I was here. I've not heard any concerns or anything from her about this, so I guess I'm asking that we can accept the award money and have that account for that. In fact, I think we already have a line item because we've had Drug Coalition grants in the past.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the award, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
The old business we had on our program was, oh, is there any mail? Colin, did you have anything?
I do not.
We had Trader Weaver Nature Preserve on old business, and they evidently canceled out on us, has been blocked out of my agenda.
David's sitting back there, I don't know if he's got anything.
Can I have a shot?
Yeah. Did you want to recognize David?
Do you have anything for us, Dave?
Well, about the, I showed you that paper about the radio station where we're, we got sponsors right now, help, doing us a show every Thursday, about 15, 20 minutes right there. We talk about, we did take an animal up there and we talk about them, and we talk about the welfare of animals, how to take care, try to help, how to take care of them and everything. And we lost one sponsor, and we got one for three months right now. And, let me look on my paper real quick. Yeah, we do a live show, about 10, 10 minutes right now, 10 to 15 minutes right in there on Thursday mornings. We would lose our sponsor, but I do think the radio has helped get some animals adopted. And people will call up there about our SNAP program, about in animals' bics of their own, for like their own wick or free lunches or food stamps or something, they can get up to animals, they can get their animals' bics for 20 bucks. You know, people do come up and get all that information. And if we do it monthly, it would cost us $125 if we had to end up doing this. And if we do it for the year, it would cost us $1,200, which will be saving $300. Originally, if we have a sponsor, it would cost around $250 for the advertising for that. But if you need more information or something, I can always get Diane over from the radio station to come in here with me, and you can ask the questions if you have any. But I know the radio has helped us out on getting some of them adopted out.
Currently you have a sponsor though, right?
Right, right now we do.
But you're asking, if you lose your sponsor, could you go ahead and pay for it?
Yes, out of the donated funds.
Out of the donated funds?
Yeah, because it does, it does help the animals out, I think. We do have people come up there to, and say, I heard this one on the radio, you still got it? Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, you know. Just like today, I had somebody that came up there around 4:30 this morning waiting on this little pup to come up. And I had another person came from Greenfield, and she was, she got there late. But the first one, we don't hold animals, first one comes, first one gets it. That's how we do that. I just asked, you know, if we lose our sponsor, if we can do this.
I would say it'd be okay to go ahead and do it if you lose your sponsor.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve David continuing with or without a sponsor with the radio program, using donated funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Well, appreciate all you guys, all your help. You guys did get my last thing here.
Yes, your report last week.
Yes, well, we're still doing pretty good there, you know, on that, on our reports. We had 48 animals total. We, I had put one, I euthanized one because of a bite, you know. We sold 10, that left me 28 animals on hand. About three cats, three of our cats went to Georgetown, Kentucky. Humane Society, Karen Snyder, her sister runs the Humane Society down there, and they're low on cats. She said, go up here and I know they got some. So she took three of ours. I had one kitten, I was in bad shape, which we tried, it was eating and everything, but it passed away overnight. And I had, I gave three dogs back to the owners because they was already up to date on shots, and they was up there that same, within an hour or two after we got the animal. So I let them have their animal back. And two of our cats went out to a barn, so we're still getting some people that's wanting cats for the barns. So if anybody still wants them, we got some barrel ones, which I know we're going to have some here shortly. You are welcome to call us and ask for barrel barn cats.
Yes.
That's all I got right now, sir.
Right.
Oh, and I forgot, I am getting some bids, estimates I should say, for replacing some of the gates, the fencing on the gates on the inside. Some of them getting kind of bad, and because some of them were, I like number nine gauge, but they start a little bit thinner ones, and they're not as strong. You know, you get dogs up there all the time trying to bite in them and all that, you know, and, you know, trying to get out and everything. So I'm getting some estimates on that too. I got one, but I don't have the other two, so I'm working on that.
You can present them for the next meeting, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much, David.
And your old business, I found out yesterday, it was too late to put it on the agenda, that we've lost one cemetery commission person. We appointed one last month, and she didn't even make the first meeting. She's decided to move to Florida with her husband. So, we have an opening, if anybody knows of somebody that has a burden for the pioneer cemeteries and would like to help take care of them, we have an opening on the cemetery commission again. And Farmer's Market.
Hello, I'm Maggie Marvam with the Purdue Extension Office of Community Wellness, and I'm also representing the Farmer's Market here. We have Jack Bundard, one of our vendors, in board. And we were seeking permission to have, start the Farmer's Market up again this year, the same location. We're changing our date from April 21st to September 29th. The reason we're doing that, we find that a lot of our producers have plants to sell, there's a spring product, and so we're going to be starting a little bit early. It will be on every Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, and when Thomas is here, we'll be moving our location. So we appreciate so much that what the county has done for us, and the Farmer's Market continues to grow, I think it's a positive aspect for our community. And last year we had around 28 vendors, so I just, we're asking for approval if we can set back up in our same location. We did get a city approval yesterday as well.
Very good.
So any questions on that or anything?
I'll move to grant permission from the Shepherd Farmer's Market. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I have one announcement and invitation, if that's okay. Fayette County's been selected to be one of two communities in the state to be a pilot program for a program called Enhancing the Value of Public Space, Creating Healthy Communities. And it's going to be April the 3rd, it's a workshop, and I invite all of you, the community, and we'll be focusing on the downtown area. And it'll be a series of four workshops, there will be Purdue professors, economists, and community developers, and health initiatives that will kind of help us work on our downtown area to encourage health. So you can contact me in the office, I've been sending emails, looking for newspapers, so I just want to invite everyone, this is, we'd like to have your input, so it's a great opportunity.
When are these meetings going to be?
The first one will be at the Miller Building, April 3rd, from 10:00 to 3:00, that will be our big groups, and then there'll be smaller groups, will help the downtown to develop a strategic plan. And we're partnering with Discover Commerceville. So we would like to have your voice there. So thank you very much, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Before we move on to claims and payroll, I would like for us to ask Jane to send out a letter to all of our departments in reference to a county auction, to put together an inventory of items that they may have.
That they're no longer using.
That they're no longer using, and that we can get in that auction. And I'd like for that inventory to be back to us by And I'd like for that inventory to be back to us by the 1st of April, so that we can make plans for a county auction. I know the Sheriff's Department has some vehicles as well.
So there's three or four cars up here in the dog park. Some of them, I don't know if that belongs to the Sheriff's Department or the highways, they need to be cleaned. Yeah.
All right. We have a lot of old and excessive equipment that needs to be gotten rid of and clear out the clutter in our basement here and in the jail, and in some of the offices.
I have a question. Over in the annex, we've got quite a bit that we should basically move from room to room, and it's not ours. It's, I can't...
Throw it in there. Throw it in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it tech stuff or...
No, she got birds or stuff upstairs.
Yeah, he's seen it. Actually, they came over a little for...
Stuff that's been dumped on and nobody's responsible for.
And there's a bunch in the basement, too, so Bill, I don't know, I don't know who would look at that, but I know it's...
Do you have inventory numbers on some of those items? So that we can trace down where they should be.
You can add that to the list, eh? Anything, anything in that building that you're not using?
If it ain't nailed down.
If it's not being used, let's clean house.
Are you sure nobody notices that somewhere?
Very good.
We're talking about an auction.
Yes.
So we gather these off to one central location?
It's time to straighten up.
Another thing on that list, when they create it, they ought to go through every department, check them, and see if there's anything they need before we do sell it, too.
Yes.
And it can be a trade.
We don't need somebody, yeah. We don't need to auction something off and then have, want to buy a new one next week to replace the one that we auctioned off.
Jane, you might want to put in that letter that with that inventory, we'll need the inventory numbers, so that we can check that off, too.
Sounds good.
With that, if you don't have anything else, I'll make a claim. I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and payroll as presented to us.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We will now sign those before we adjourn the meeting.
And I wanted...
You would be more so than the number that's added.
I put somebody up there for my earnings. I'll get help.
I have some...
Yeah, I'm going to be...
I know.
Oh.
I know.
I said, I take a look. I mean, I have, I need to...
Well, we got, I told you before, we got...
In that part of the country.
Climb some...
They're empty.
You know, true, and if we all want, they don't, but they are, they will leave...
He said, no, it's different.
They have a smaller room, but they will not, because they want to, they want to adopt them, but they have a, they have a completely separate room with all...
Unless you know it there, they will not tell you.
Will they tell you and call us?
Maybe.
Wow.
I don't know, but that...
Rusty's running.
They just have somebody upstairs on, have a lot of...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's such a shame.
Walmart's going to flip.
Walmart's like getting it out of there.
Oh, you're killing me.
I thought you were going to break down on me.
I just don't know that.
They're founded online, is it there?
They find it all the way from California to the surgeon there.
She's going to have him sure, UPS, she does mail or what?
I fucking wonder what it's like to cause more to strip it out of America than California.
Sometimes I say, well, I don't like that if there's somebody who has a product.
For a while, there were a lot of banks, tables, cats, a lot of those.
Seems like there's a, there's a lot of feral cats.
I told my wife, we're moving out, look on the edge of town, and I said, we'll have 10 rock cats before, before that happens, this time of year, because of the historic time.
Where are you looking at now?
I'm going to move out on Village Street.
I don't know.
My wife, my wife is really hard.
George, that's amazing.
You said, I told you, I'm meeting some kind of...
I had three cats over.
Is that it?
I'll move to you.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn. And you say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes for adjournments, thank you.
All will go to town.